I'm gonna do like the priest at the homily. He sits there and reflects and okay, it's Tuesday.
Just a second. We gotta wait for a second July.
Second reading, I'm saying.
Okay, it's Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. We'll call to meet in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Okay, minutes of reports received in five.
Okay, we got the June 2020 part piece filed and June 2020 sheriff's file and the treasurer's reconciliation report filed for June 2020.
Okay, Commissioner liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
You know, HBA board meeting, planning commission meeting. Quarterly reports are due tomorrow if you're not done already. HBA general membership meeting tomorrow night. Renegades play baseball all night. We got our central bank government advocacy day Thursday. Finally got that on the right date.
The 1:00 P.M.
Yes. And then Annie's retirement, 1:30 Friday. And then Renegades are doing a celebrity slow pitch softball tournament. So just make sure we have an ambulance ready for me that night. And then I have a baseball game afterwards too, so it should be interesting. Seven o'clock when they see me get hurt.
I think the only thing that I have is a hotline port authority board of commissioners meeting on Tuesday, 21st at 7:30 a.m. and at the chamber, so that's it.
That was the port, there's a press conference today, right?
Oh, yeah.
At three at Rotary Park.
Could be.
We got that late yesterday, but it's, I guess, the governor signing the.
Oh, yeah, signing of that legislation.
Press conference at three o'clock today at Rotary Park.
That's the signing of the conveyance in?
No, this is just the press conference. The signing is closed, you know, I think probably because of COVID-19, so.
Okay, so just have an announcement.
And let's see, that's today. Tomorrow I've got bank board meeting. Got a tri, the tri county bicentennial meeting at 3:30. Traffic and safety at 8:00 a.m. Thursday. And Sunday my articles in the news Tribune. That's all I've got there. Any commission comments? We're gonna move this statement discussion up to number six then 'cause I think that's why everybody is here, so.
No, I saw, I was going to, yeah, so I just moved that we submit this as a statement from the commission. I know you guys have looked at it and so anyway.
You wanna read through it first or you just go ahead and?
So I was just hoping to make it a motion to move that we submit this as a statement from the commission in regards to what, what has come about in the news, so.
Okay, I'll say again.
All in favor?
Aye. In recent days, the Cole County Commission was contacted by the Federal Bureau of Investigations, FBI, and was told of an ongoing investigation that they were conducting. It was made very clear that this investigation was not about the actual ambulance purchase itself, any wrongdoing by the Cole County Commission, and that the Cole County Commission was not the target of the investigation or any county staff. We have and always will do what is best with the taxpayer money. We were told that the target of the investigation was looking into threats made at senior staff of Cole County and also directed towards the Cole County Commission. The threats to staff included loss of employment and the takeover of our EMS service because we refused to buy ambulances from certain places or people using taxpayer money. Ambulances were purchased using a cooperative purchase agreement, which is a common process used throughout the United States, state of Missouri, and other local governments. Two companies submitted pricing and Osage Industries was $17,000 more per unit. Our chief of EMS reviewed the proposals and recommended the best product that met specifications was the best quality and was $17,000 less per unit. This savings will allow the county to save hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money over the replacement cycle. This savings allowed the county to purchase needed life-saving equipment such as ventilators and IV pumps for every unit. This equipment will help save lives in Cole County and gives our employees the tools they need to perform a tough job. These threats make a tough job even more stressful and create an atmosphere that is corrupt and financially motivated. The Cole County Commission has been a good steward of your money and has spent your money wisely. We have a chief at EMS that has made great improvements to our service such as training, protocols, equipment upgrades, and new life-saving equipment. They have been faced with a pandemic and performed above and beyond our expectations. They're in the process of becoming nationally accredited and have become one of the best services in the state. This type of commitment from our EMS staff and chief and our commitment from the Cole County Commission should not be subject to these threats or political pressure. We have and will continue to cooperate completely and honestly with the FBI investigation, and we ask that all Cole County elected officials and Cole County staff do the same. We ask everyone to allow the investigation to continue without interference. We hope that the individuals responsible will be exposed for criminal activity and brought to justice. In the coming days and weeks, we expect those responsible will try to shift the focus, make false statements, and try to blame others for this activity. In closing, we want to reiterate that we are not the target of this investigation, and we have been told that we have done nothing wrong and we will cooperate, cooperate fully. We support our decision to buy a high-quality ambulance for $17,000 less per ambulance. We support our EMS chief and his decisions, and we support our EMS staff. We are disappointed that corruption and threats were the result of spending the taxpayers' money wisely. To allow this investigation to continue without interference, we will not take any questions at this time.
I just wanna add that, you know, Jeff, in your defense, I know the title here says the ambulance FBI eyeing ambulance purchases. It's not actually the purchase that's being eyed, but we didn't give you a whole lot to go on yesterday, so in your defense, so.
Jeff, do you have something else?
No, I just kinda wanted to, the titling this morning or the headline was a little misleading. It wasn't about the actual purchase.
Okay, get that done. We will move on bids and contracts. Approval and signing of updated sub-recipient award contracts from SEMA for EMPG funding.
Is that contract in front of you basically a supplemental? It covers half a mine and my assistant's salary for the year plus all of our equipment, a lot of purchases that we have to do basically just for emergency management office. Now, you had signed one back in December or January. SEMA has changed it and they've extended it out six months, and I can't tell you why because I don't even think they really know why. So what that is, that's, it would be 18 months now rather than just 12 months. But it's all the same. I would just need yours, your signature on the front.
Okay. I move that we approve and sign the updated sub-recipient award contract from SEMA for EMPG funding.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry.
It's two copies.
Okay. Discussion and signing of purchase agreement with Huber and Associates for replacement of Cole County Cisco network switches.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Brian.
So this is a cooperative procurement agreement through, with Huber and Associates. We're replacing, we have remaining switches that need to be changed out due to obsolescence and the lack of support. So I would ask that this be approved and signed. Aunt Jill has, has looked at this.
What's the cost on that?
The cost on it is $22,732.17, and we're replacing courthouse, first floor, 24-port switch, fifth floor, 24-port switch, jail meeting room, 12-port switch, EMS, 24-port switch, ambulance bay, 12-port switch, and public works 12-port switch.
Is that all?
That's it.
Good.
Yep.
I move that we sign the purchase agreement with Huber and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. CenturyLink sole source advertising approval.
Getting everybody in here today.
I know.
We just need approval to run the sole source ad for CenturyLink. This is to get internet data services fiber cabling over at the Prenger Family Center.
Good.
Yeah.
Move that we sign the, or I move that we approve the CenturyLink sole source advertising.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is Mike?
Joe's here.
Oh, there, okay, Mike said.
You're up, Joe.
Yeah, Joe, present abatement hearing number 202-006-002.
Hey, you brought pictures for jail.
Bradley and Patricia Jansen, 5109 Scrugg Station Road.
Mike out.
Yeah, Mike's, his, his wife had a bit of a fall yesterday, so he's not able to make it today helping her out. She's okay, but on the minute. So the Jansen property, you may recall, has been a subject of, of prob, uh, problems before with code enforcement. And so this has been going on for years. At this, at this particular situation, it did take a couple of months to get them to comply. But they, they have actually, if you look at the pictures, you'll, you'll see that they did a good job of getting their grass cut finally. They had extremely tall weeds and, and they also had some vehicle, vehicle, nuisance vehicles in their, in their driveway that were inoperable, busted out windshields or back glass and stuff and creating an area of concern. And so that, two of those vehicles have been removed, the two that were the worst inoperable vehicles. And so, um, so as far as right now, there is, the, the last one of those pictures shows there is still a big brush pile in the back that needs to be, they plan on burning to get rid of that brush in the back of their house and in their, in their field behind the house. But other than that, really, there's nothing that, that needs to be removed or, or taken care of, and they do have a timeline on that. They had a death in the family, so they're not able to do it right now, but they, they promised it to be done within a week. But one of the things is to kinda, you all have asked before of to, if there's issues that continue, to try to bring them to your attention so that we can get them corrected without having to officially go through the full process. So I just kinda want, you know, it's up to you what, what, what is decided, but you know, it appears that they have done a very good job of mowing and weed eating and stuff finally at this particular time. It could be a month or less before it's back to, back to needing to be done again.
So you'll go back if, if their weeds and stuff grow back up?
Yeah, and typically, you know, it's complaint driven. And so when we get a complaint, we go by. Sometimes when we move an area, especially if you all told us to follow up on this because we don't want it to backslide, then we'll, when we're in that area, we will drive by and take a look. And if it is, we'll usually knock on the door and leave them a hang tag and say, you know, needs to be corrected, but it's, it's your wishes.
I think persistent offenders, I'd, I just, you do, you do that.
Okay.
So we kinda have to go through the whole process to, you know, do the abatement to get it cleaned up, right?
I, I think there are some people that, that are on the, uh, is it procurement list, that have actually already cut, mowed grass before that, that we have contact with, and, and they usually do it for a relatively inexpensive price for just something like this. I mean, if this is done quickly, it won't cost much at all. People usually have a pretty reasonable price under, you know, so. Probably the, if we actually had to have them charge the administrative costs of $100 that we normally do, that's probably as much as, as what it would cost to cut this grass. It's not a real big yard.
But if you did that once, I bet they.
Well, that's kind of why, you know, I think you all said last year and probably possibly before then, but you know, to try to keep on them to, to get this done and, and, and you know, if, if that's what, I mean, basically, we will let you know if we see this property backsliding and you'll tell us what to do and if we need to get with Jill or whoever to make sure that, that we're doing things correctly without any issues, then, then that's what.
So I guess I'm, I mean, are you wanting to have like a standing abatement order that would, you could just?
Well, I thought that's what you all had asked for before. I, I mean, it's up to you. You know, that's what I thought you all had mentioned before. This is definitely a repeat offender, and I know there was discussion previously about repeat offenders, you know, trying to get them pushed into not, you know, non-compliance because it takes so long and, and the weeds and stuff. I mean, this did take two months to, to get them to finally take care of things.
Two months, those, it's gonna be some tall grass.
Yeah, and, and they work cutting part of the front yard. It was the back that wasn't being touched. It was a jungle. They had to actually buy weed eaters and stuff just to get in there because they couldn't even mow it. It was too, it was too tall to mow, so they had to weed eat the whole thing.
I mean, I like the idea of not having to go through the process and having a standing abatement order to deal with repeat offenders, you know, for somebody that we continue to have problems with, so. I mean, I'd be open to that.
And we like seeing you, Joe, but it's, you've got other things you need to do.
It's been pretty busy.
I mean, I think it gives them a, if we let them know upfront too, it also says, hey, you know, if you, in non-compliance, they, we already have the authority to have it done, and so.
We were able to get their phone numbers, both of the resident, the son who, who resides there permanently, and the dad who actually owns the building, owns the property. And so we have, excuse me, we have both of their phone numbers, and we will contact them and try to get them to comply. But if it's, you know, two weeks after it's out of compliance, you know, we'd be fine with, if you wish to go ahead and have it abated and send them the bill.
So you're gonna go back to them in two weeks if it's not in compliance? And then you're gonna tell them we're coming in to cut the grass in three days or a week, or?
Well, I mean, you know, it, it, again, it's up to you. We, I'm not sure, when, when you all had mentioned this previously, exactly what the parameters were. I mean, you know, we, we don't do anything without making, you know, checking with you guys to make sure that you and Jill or whoever are all comfortable with, with the decisions that we're, you know, suggesting. Again, we will first contact, we always try to get compliance first. And so we will definitely try to phone and call the homeowner and the, the resident that's there. If it gets out of compliance, which is, you know, basically, when, when it gets a foot tall, we, you know, or when we get phone calls, that's when, you know, that's when we want to try to make sure that the, the grass is cut and weeds are cut and stuff. And if it gets out of control, you know, we would prefer not to have to wait another two months.
I think if you call them and tell them, you know, they're, they're not in compliance, and we tell them we're gonna give them a week, and if it's not, not done within that week, then we do it and, um, you know, I mean.
But that's what you wanna do is build, come up, not have to come up here and just call them?
Yeah, it's just call them and say you've got a week to cut it. And unless we have a monsoon or something like that where you, you can't get out and cut it, that gives them a week to do it. And then we'll just send somebody in and send them the bill.
Talk through some of the issues with that. I mean, 'cause I, I mean, I know in the past that you haven't been able to get a hold of the property owner, or you've had to leave hang tags on the door and you get no response, and so, I mean, there is no contact. I mean, it's, you know, whether they ignore us or we don't know where the property owner is.
They have been answering their phone now.
Right.
We do have good phone numbers and they have been answering and respectful. Now, they don't always answer the door. Sometimes when I'm knocked, they don't answer the door, but typically they have answered phone ca, phone calls.
But that's this individual. I mean, we've had other instances and other, other places that, you know, similar problems with tall grass and trash and junk and cars and, um, you know, and some of those people have been repeat violations too. And so, you know, what's the process to, to handle all those things?
And, and if we need to come back each time, I mean, that's okay. We're just trying to, I know Mike and I have talked about this before because we're, you know, just wanted a more clear definition of how you want us to handle situations like that if they do backslide.
I'd say if you get another complaint, we just, we leave it on there that we can call them and it's still basically in the abatement process. So tell them they got a week to fix it. That's just me, I'm just one.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what.
I'm, I'm good with that, though. I mean, is that, so we just leave the abatement process on this property? And, and it just goes for, I mean, it could go forever, or? I'm, I'm just asking. I don't, I don't know what that looks like, so.
Well, if you've got a standing abatement order on the property, that's what I would do and maybe set parameters.
Sure.
As far as, I mean, mowing the grass is not quite like some of those really expensive actions that you have to take.
So it sounds like that's a good solution to just kinda leave the abatement order on the property and be able to address it as, gives you a little more, maybe.
I, I agree. I mean, I think that's a good resolution because that way this one, you know, this particular property has that, and then, and then, you know, each, each property could be different based on how difficult they are to get a hold of or what the situation is as far as if it's actually junk that some scrappers say is very valuable, but, you know, to most people it's junk. And so then that's all, that, that would be more difficult, but we need to be more careful on things like that.
We've seen a lot, we've seen a lot worse than, than. Yeah, yeah, 17 would've come if you'd had the rat harbingers. I like that.
That gave you some direction then?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, basically, if I'm understanding correctly, case by case basis, this is definitely one that's there. And others, if, if they come up, you know, we will come here, get the same kind of wording on that particular address and, and, and go from there.
I like that yellow Jeep too they got.
Well, that, that's, yeah, they, they fought pretty hard when we asked, when we asked them to move that, that was their baby. That's, I guess that's pretty expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, animal control reclassification.
So as you know, Annie Gurrell's retiring from Sheriff's Department for 12 years and it's, we would have to replace her, but after reviewing her current salary, she's making $38,900. We want to reclassify that to a deputy position. Starting pay is 37, so it is still be under my salary line for this year. We would be able to outfit that person with what we have right now, so we're not asking for extra money there. It would help us on the road, give us another deputy, but it would help us on the road on investigations. The deputy would be able to submit the charges and be able to make arrests. Right now, Annie's not able to do that, so. We would ask that you go ahead and allow us to reclassify that animal control position to a deputy position.
At the 38,9?
No.
37.
Go down to 37, would it?
So what we'll end up doing is we'll probably fill it with one of the, I'm sure one of the jail deputies want to go to that, and then we would put the $37,000 deputy down into the jail. So it would still be $37,000 and we just move it around a little bit.
Yeah, I know we had talked about it and remember what you said about which salary or whatever, so I was just clarifying that, but yeah, it makes sense because then you have an extra deputy too.
Yes.
You don't have an extra one, you have another one that's on, so.
It's gonna be hard. I mean, it, it's hard to find someone who has had the compassion that, that Annie did when she was dealing with animal control. It's gonna be, you know, and that's what I tell my staff. We can't, we're never gonna find another Annie. We gotta find somebody to, to go in that position, but we're never gonna find her. She's irreplaceable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. We talked about it and.
Yeah.
That was a good idea, actually. Kinda surprised me, John.
Sorry, I did. The only person I didn't get a chance to talk to was Chris. I didn't think I'd get a chance to.
You talked to me about it.
Good.
Yeah, losing it. Need more hair on your head. I'm good, so we don't need to vote on that or anything, do we?
No.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. First reading of budget adjustment number 13.
This is for $48,306. This is for the law enforcement center or budget, and it is the DSSSF grant. And no action today is the first reading.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number 14.
This is for the $103,483.12. This was the first check that we received on the health department, the roof. So no action today, but I'll bring it back.
Okay, we're gonna move that, the Ameren versus Estes State to the end after our closed session, so. Cares funding request from Cole County Schools discussion. I don't know, we're still, we're still trying to discover what, what we need to do to help our schools, and schools are opening fairly quickly, so.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the process going as quick as possible, and right now we just don't have an answer.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Did they submit a list?
I mean, I really think we need to have a list submitted from each school because, I mean, 'cause I think there's different ones that have different requests.
And Chad Suter from Jeff City Schools is working on this. He just said there wasn't any way he could have it ready for this, so.
So are you gonna make them submit a list, or?
I think we'll still have to do an application by application.
Well, I mean, we, we, we talked about it yesterday in the meeting about the cares money too and just figuring out the process and are we going to buy equipment and then give it to them? Or are we going to have them submit an application for certain things? And then we have to pick and choose if we think it is worthy of the money or do we give them money per student? I think there's just way too many questions, so there's not a whole lot of discussion we can have on the schools, and unfortunately, that's the answer they're gonna get right now. I think if they need to get their schools opened up, they need to buy whatever they got to buy. got to buy, and I know it's hard to do for some of the smaller ones especially, but if they got to get opened up, they just... They have no answer right now from us. We don't have the process in...
No.
...in line yet, and after discussion yesterday, we'll probably have even more questions.
Right.
Yeah.
So... But I know we do want to help them, so...
Right. Unfortunately, that's not a very good answer, but it's the only answer we got.
This is...
Yeah.
This... Yeah, this is...
Okay. Well, I'll reach out to a few of them that have contacted me and just let them know that they need to do what they need to do to get opened up come August. Hopefully, they'll get some reimbursement for some of those items.
When did we set the next meeting for?
Next Monday.
Monday? Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number 15.
This is for $10,492.54. This is in the law enforcement budget, and this was proceeds for an election that happened on one of their vehicles.
Do we have anything else? I know Adam, is this... No, you just came to...
Just came about the animal control and also the information I asked about.
Okay, okay.
Say hi. I encourage what they... Definitely the animal control, that should help Centertown, because Annie was a big resource being local, but deputy being able to take action at the time in some situations might be a much better option, so that's a good move for us, I believe.
Well, Annie's still going to be part. There's going to be help on us. She doesn't know it yet, but she's still going to be.
Good, we can chase hogs together again.
Yeah.
So when you hand her the retirement certificate, it's going to have some small writing, is what you're saying?
Yeah, just around this.
You got to watch him.
Well, we're going to try to do that with Larry Benz and Larry Bishop and...
Larry, they can retire.
That's what I told them, but anyway, it's... Okay. You got anything else, Mr. Jeff? You usually have...
No, I'm just worried about Saturday.
Ballgame?
Yeah.
Joe's playing, too. Joe's playing for the health department. He left, but...
So we can come and socially distance and root for you, is that...
It's not going to be a good week for our health care.
Just call her, and she'll sit up.
Just don't run past first.
I'm not going to run. Unless I have a cheeseburger there, then we might be some running. No, it'd be fun. I think they're doing it for fundraiser for some of the COVID relief stuff, so...
Which... Which... Where is it?
It'd be at Vivian Field before the Renegades play, so we're going to play at 7:00, and it'll just be fun. I think there's some firemen and police or sheriffs in it, too?
I didn't know any better.
Oh.
Is this the... Is this the only Renegades game that they're having this year, or...
No, they've been playing Wednesdays and Saturdays and...
I didn't know.
...Bobbitts, interest called.
I thought they had canceled that season, so...
Season's canceled, but they're still trying to...
I think the league did.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, it was fun. It was a Saturday night, it was pretty decent out. Sun went down, and it's comfortable.
Good.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
I mean, we go into closed session, present section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal action, sub 1.
Second.
Roll call?
Sam?
Yes.
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 How long does it take to take? Because you're coming in to...
Yeah. Get started, and then get it to this. No way to look at it.
Please try again later.
If you've got it on... If you've got OBS recording, it won't watch, but it'll still be recorded, so...
We got something tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Do we have something tomorrow?
I'm not going to worry about it.
Why was I thinking we had something tomorrow? I don't have anything on my calendar. It's freaking me out.
Thursday, we've got the Central Bank.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes.
So anyway, we discussed the process with DevNet and their remedies that they had done, and then also their go-live date of October 5th, and we decided that we would accept their remedies and go live on October 5th, and so we'll be sending them a letter to state that, and anyway, keep moving forward.
Okay.
Okay?
They will have people here to help you, assist you.
I hope so.
Yes.
It's going to be rough at a reassessment here, but we'll get it done.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, and if there's things that we need to hire some temporary people or something, too, I mean, just let us know, and...
I will do that.
And we're committed to this, getting this done, and trying to get it done as soon as possible, so...
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming back. Okay.
I'm out in the day.
All right. You got anything else?
Anything, any other issues?
Uh-uh.
I mean, if we stand in recess till 4:30?
Second.